Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Vineland Board of Education meeting for December 6th, 2017. Roll call, Ms. Haley.
Ms. Costa?
Here.
Ms. Cattispati?
Present.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Medio?
Here.
Ms. Rios?
Present.
Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Boardley?
Present.
Mr. Jennings?
Present.
In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has caused notice in posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time and place thereof, agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, S&amp;J Today, The Press of Atlantic City, Nuestra Comunidad, Vista Bueno, the Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. And can we have Vineland High School to lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we... We have a resolution for executive session?
We do not.
Do we have a resolution for executive session?
I do not.
Okay. Special presentations, Dr. Gruccio?
Yes, this time of year, we're very lucky to have some very wonderful presentations. Tonight, we're going to start with our marching band. They have done a phenomenal job this year, and I'd like to call their advisor, Mr. William McDevitt, forward if he would like to say a few words, and we have certificates for all of our students. I understand they're going to perform for us this evening. And I want to personally thank you, Bill. This is Bill's last year, and you've always done a phenomenal job, and you're going to be deeply missed, so thank you for the job that you do. (applause)
(music)
Thank you very much, and thank you, Board of Ed, for your continued support of our programs at the high school. This is about, probably about two-thirds of the group, because a lot of them work after marching band season. And we are now into our concert season, which will... Our last performance for the year will be on December 20th. We have our instrumental concert over at the other building. Ms. Cunnings, I'm sure, will tell you about the concert next week. And they, right now, have kind of transformed out of this group into a concert group. But the marching band did quite an amazing job this year. It started out kind of shaky, because I don't know if you remember, last year, we graduated more than a third of the band. They were seniors. So to put this large of a group together with a lot of new people is, you know, it's difficult in the beginning. But they started out the year with taking first place for the third year in a row in the Fireman's Parade in Wildwood. And then every competition that they went to, they not only were first place in their group, but they were first place overall. So this is the first year that this group has had a completely undefeated season during their regular marching competitions.[320.58][320.58](applause) I also have a great staff that helps me. In fact, this year, I kind of tried to step back a little bit to let them kind of feel themselves around a little bit more. One of them is here tonight. I'd like to introduce Mr. Matt Thomas.[331.31][331.31](applause) And we have a lot more to do this year. We have six months more to pack in some stuff.
Thank you for the fine job.
Thank you.
We have a certificate of recognition for you, which is extremely small in comparison to what you have done for this district and this band and all your first places and top prizes. I hope you cherish this. This might be your last one.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Bill, there's also certificates for all the members of the band over here. Thank you.[347.31][347.31](applause)
Thank you, band members.
Thank you so much for the phenomenal job. And now, it gives me pleasure to call forward Lori Cunnings, who is the Director of our choir, and they're going to perform for us this evening as well.
Chris, if they're performing, other people are like, "Come there too." Okay. I guess that would be it. (inaudible)
(music)
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 ...fourth year. She was part of a, the Singles State Tournament. Each year, one hundred and twenty-eight of the top singles players in New Jersey qualify for the tournament. And this year, with a lot of support from her teammates, from the school, from the community, we had such a large group of people up there supporting her. She didn't disappoint. She won the 2017 Single State Championship on that day. She had the toughest schedule of all. She played in forty-five matches in two months. She went forty-five and oh. And her career record was a one fifty-nine and three, one hundred and fifty-nine wins through and three losses. There are so many accomplishments that I can go on, but it would take up much of our time. But she's going to receive an athletic scholarship to Rutgers University for sports, sports psychology, full ride. So as far as this team, this is truly a special group of young ladies. They accomplished so much as a team. Tess accomplished so much as an individual. And they made Violin, the Swannan School District, very proud. And once again, we would like to thank the Board of Ed for all of your, all your support and what you provide for our students and these young ladies. So we, Ms. Luciano, I thank you. Okay? All right. We're all set?
Thank you, Mr. Masaro. We have some certificates for the team and Eugene, he's got them.
On behalf of the school board, thank you ladies for doing Violin proud.
All right, Tess, could you come up here? On behalf of the school board, we'd like to give you this plaque to recognize your accomplishment. As far as I know, you've accomplished some good things in your path in tennis. Congratulations.
Okay, next we have Mr. Ashton and Mr. Lundey from Cunningham Alternative Program, and they're going to give us an update on the program.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to have some student participation to start off. We're going to put some packets in our board members' hands. It's just an overview. You'll see one sheet is a Q and A fact sheet. Each year, twice a year, we'll have a quality management audit. Keeps us aligned with all our philosophy, our measurables, our contract objectives. Some of the snapshot numbers that you'll see are as followed. You'll also be given a PowerPoint that also highlights a lot of the great things that have been going on. Firstly, I'd like to just address the board and say it's an honor and privilege of mine, Mr. Lundey's, the students and staff, to just be able to serve Violin High School students and now middle school students under your guidance. Just thank you very much from the bottom of our heart. I'd also like to just say congratulations to tennis team and Tess. Great job coaches. I know the choir and the band left, but that's an excellent job just by student participation. Doc McCann, wherever you are, you're doing a wonderful job. I'd also just like to highlight before I get to some of these facts, just highlight the student pride we want to instill in our students at Cunningham Academy. And this is something that we know that Cunningham Alternative School used to be a prestigious elementary school. And that's something we want to bring back into the city of Violin here, is just that prestige in that building. This year is going to be the hundredth year of that building. We want to bring people back in who, a lot of our family members, uncles, grandmothers, things of that nature, they know it when it was that elementary school. Just to review some of our information, our total pop as of today, sixty-seven students. We have a contract total of ninety-five. We've serviced a total of students of seventy-seven to date. That's students withdrawn, dropped, things of that nature, going to other school districts, truancy, things of that nature. The one positive point of pride I want to emphasize with when you hear "alternative", we want to eliminate that, that word. It's an academy, okay? It's a sense of pride encouraging young people to perform at the best of their ability. The attendance is one of those topics that is always a constant topic. If you have a recipe to get students one hundred percent attendance, you'll really be, you know, making a lot of money. But at the same time, that recipe is, is very difficult. And to really highlight that, eighty-four percent attendance to date, and that's year to date of the months leading up to today, eighty-four percent attendance. Our special education population at the moment is twelve. That consists of two BD classrooms at the moment, high school being nine, middle school being four. Those students have a great transition plan from middle school to high school and from high school to the post-secondary world, something that we instill again into our philosophy that all students need to have a plan. And that's something that we want students to really develop those coping skills, social, emotional, and not only that, academically, to reengage with that mainstream setting. So for that, building overall is twenty-four percent classified, which is aligned with the New Jersey regulations, give or take a few numbers. Our ELL pop is one, which is essentially two percent at the moment. State testing is still getting solidified through the New Jersey State Board of Ed. So that's to be determined. January graduates, we have zero at this point. However, at the current moment, we have ten grad, ten expected graduates, so seniors that have come from the high school to us. We look to try to restore students back as far as transitional model, and that's something that, you know, we also want to take pride as far as how to, how to reengage individuals with not only their attendance, but their academics and the behavior coping mechanisms. So at that point, we also have about twenty students that potentially are going to be eligible to reengage. We're going to talk with the vice, vice principals and obviously approve it through Doc McCann to be able to have that happen. And that's something that, you know, we also are very proud and just see the student progress, not only student progress, the parental support. I want to highlight the fact that, you know, we have about eighteen students representing Cunningham Academy today. I also have about five staff members. If you guys could just stand. And I also have some parents represented. So again, just a strong sense of school pride to show the support that we do instill in our families. I'd like everybody just to be able to give a round of applause. Thank you. Mr. Lundey's going to steal the show here, just for two positive points of pride, things we've been really working on. I want to also say thank you, just to Dr. Gruccio, Mr. John Frangiapanni, Ms. Cattispati, and all the other board members who did take their time. Mr. Jennings has come out to our Thanksgiving Day feast. It was a great success. Students really enjoyed it, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening to the board. Um, yeah, just a couple of positive points of pride, as Ms. Ashton stated. One is our Battle of the Cohorts, a new initiative program that we started. And it's a healthy competition amongst all grade levels to just get students to do those important things, attendance, behavior, and academics. Right now, I want to say juniors are in the lead. I'm one of the advisors for that cohort, so I take pride in that. And another thing is our enrichment program, which is clubs at the end of the day. Students have, we have our fitness club ran by Mr. Tort. We have our book club ran by Ms. Hargrove. And we have our newsletter club, just to name a few, ran by Ms. McDowell, who's not present. And we also have our drama club ran by Mr. Jones. So just new initiatives to keep students engaged. And also during that time, at the end of the day, we're working on edutery component through Miss Arts and supplemental support, as well as any students who may need tutoring during that time. So just anything to engage students and keep them focused on what the ultimate goal is, which is graduation and post-secondary.
Thank you.
I'd like to also allow Xavier Bogan to speak, just from his personal experience, just to give a highlight of what his path has been thus far.
Good evening. My name's Xavier Bogan, and I currently go to Cunningham Academy. Something that, like, there's so many good things that I could say about Cunningham Academy. Like, when I first heard about me going to the alt, I was extremely angry and I didn't know how to react. But as I got there, I found, like, I realized that they're not there for, like, what I thought they were there for. Like, everybody told me that, Ed, when I'm going there, they're gonna, they're gonna take me up top, I'm gonna get done, get beat up. But it's not that. It's completely the opposite, actually. They're there for the supporters for, like, they're there for us for positive role models. They, they help us accept, like, confrontations, like, we, like, in real-life situations, though. So say you're working and you, you get in trouble, you do something you're not supposed to do. You're not supposed to, for me, catch an attitude or just simply walk out. Like, you gotta, you gotta eat that. So they teach us, they teach us so much. Like, like I said, I didn't think I was going to like it, but the transition there was, it was, it was pretty bad my first day, but after that first day, Mr. Sorano, I don't know where he's at, right over there, we had a real good lengthy conversation, and I was able to turn my attitude towards the school completely around. And I feel as though it's, it's a good school to go to, like. You can learn a lot from going there. Like, it's not just a place where bad kids go, like, it's not just that. So, like, kids go there for academics. Like, if you're behind in classes, you can go there, you can recover, like, you can get back, and you could go back to the high school where we're supposed to be. And that's what, that's what we there for. We're there for, to go back to the high school and just make up for what we've done. Thank you.
I'd like to just, I'd like to just highlight to all the young people here that that's very difficult to do. It's a very intimidating platform, so. I think the underlying message is the simple fact that we cannot lose our young people. Obviously, everybody has deficiencies and triggers and things of that nature, which we have to identify, continue to build strengths, and develop strategies of how to get better on our weaknesses. So all in all, thank you. Great job to everybody, and thank you again to the board. We look to work and serve for you in the years to come.
Would you mind bringing the students and staff that are here up for a picture?
Please move quickly up front so we can have a picture.
Mr. Ashton, and Mr. Lundey.
Yes.
You continuously thank us for supporting you, but we want to thank you for what you're doing for these young people. It's what it's all about, and it's what this district needs, and, you know, there's no bad kids, they're just, they need to be steered in the right direction, and you guys are doing a fantastic job, and we appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you all for taking the time to come out tonight.
Gee, we got to get you a wider lens?
Thank you again. We appreciate you taking the time to be here, and every time we visit the program, it's phenomenal. So thank you for the great job that you do.
Thank you.
Is Jose here? I think I saw him earlier. There he is. Okay. Do you have a report for us tonight? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, board members and esteemed guests. I'm Jose Mateo, senior class president. And it is my pleasure to be speaking before you all today, well, tonight. The first few months of the school year, although very stressful, stressful for some, have actually been quite exciting, with some college applications going out. Some of my classmates are still waiting, meanwhile, others have climbed up the echelons of happiness. There's nothing greater in this world than positivity, and seeing a smile on all of my classmates' faces while walking through the hallways. I sense such a feeling of peace in our beloved school. Nearly everyone continues to comply with the dress code, and students have taken a step to become more involved in our school and community. They've even started new clubs, such as the UNICEF Club, a club based on helping to provide for young children in Africa. Also, our choir had an amazing performance last night, and our academic team brought home first and second place at the First Annual Mainland Mega Mind Mash. But let's not forget about that football team, with an amazing performance on Thanksgiving against those guys from across town. I won't say their names, don't worry. A team that also beat Milvo this season and went on to become the South Jersey Group Four State Champions was our amazing girls' tennis team, as you saw earlier, with Tess Tennis, Tess Fisher. We call her Tess Tennis in school. Furthermore, I would like to mention some of the wonderful events that are coming up at our school. On December fourteenth, the NHS inductions are being held in our south auditorium, and the X Factor Talent Show is on December fifteenth, followed by the Snowball Dance on December sixteenth, which is hosted by our junior class. That is all that I have for tonight. I hope you all have a blessed night and get home safely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mateo.
Thank you. Great job.
Okay. Approval of minutes, November first, 2017, combined meeting. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Did I miss something?
No.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Cattispati?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Medio?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Boardley?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
And I'm sorry I missed the HIB report. Is there any questions on HIB report? Anyone? Seeing none, thank you. We're going to have to skip number seven for Mr. DeSanto. He is supposed to be arriving shortly. He does have something to explain to us, and when he arrives, we'll, we'll come back to that. And is there any comments on agenda items?
Yes. Vicki Miller?
Vicki Miller. I had something written up, but it's not here. I want to talk about Mr. McDevitt. Mr. McDevitt, I was, his first band aide president. I came from Mr. Parks' group into Mr. McDevitt's. Mrs. Decker, Mrs. Inglings, and myself were very active in the band. Poor Mr. McDevitt. He had more trouble with us than he did his students, but he stood up to the plate. Him being so young and us being older, we thought we were the boss. He stood up to us, and you can see what he did with the band. Very proud to say I was a band parent, support the band, and I think being a single parent was the best thing for me. Got active, got to go on trips with them, got to know all students. Violin High School Band is one of the best, if not the best, in my eyes. I'm sure everybody thinks of that, but if you look at our band, we have grown. And I always support the arts, sports, everything, but the band is my heart. And I just wanted to thank Mr. McDevitt, and I'm surprised he made it this long after the first year with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you. Dr. Gruccio will move on to the consent agenda.
I would like to recommend discussion and approval of personnel items 1.1, A through E, with the exception of number eleven, zero, four, nine, which is pulled.
Questions, comments? Roll call, Ms. Haley?
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Cattispati?
Yes.
Mr. Boardley?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
I would like to recommend discussion and approval of procedures and operations 2.1 through 2.5. Questions, comments, anyone? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Haley?
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Cattispati?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Boardley?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Review of bills incurred during October 2017. Any questions? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Haley?
Ms. Acosta?
Yes.
Ms. Cattispati?
Yes.
Mr. Fiocchi?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Boardley?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Is there any committee reports?
I have two.
Two? Kim?
I have curriculum instruction. We met November twenty-seventh, Mr. Fiocchi, Mr. Boardley, Mr. Sabrana, and Mr. Frye. And I've had the opportunity to sit on that committee for three years, all three years of my board time, and I would like to thank Mr. Frye for everything that he's done with the curriculum. I know we have expanded, and we are just increasing ideas for our students. At the meeting, we discussed a possible real estate development, flipping kind of credit on elective public to make it public. Someone did come and speak to us at a board meeting, so we are looking into that. We talked about our website, our yearbooks, and the honor science classes, and they did pick a new meeting day for the next board. And I have transportation. We met November twenty-eighth, Mr. Calavini, Mr. Medio, Mr. Frangiapatti, Mr. Holmes, and Dr. Gruccio. We talked about the Zonar. We are replacing some cards, but the parents are paying for the replacement cards. We have ninety-five percent of our students riding the Violin buses are using the cards, eighty percent of the students riding Shepherd buses are using the cards. We talked about bus, a bus purchase plan for some buses, redistricting. We talked about the busing for our charter school. Mr. Frangiapatti, thank you. I've actually sat on that committee for three years. Mr. Calavini, you and I had a discussion at the last meeting. I'd like to thank you and your staff. You've done an exceptional job, and I've seen such an increase with coop, you know, being cooperative, and you guys have just been so helpful. So I think this year was the best year we've had starting up, so congratulations to you and your staff, and, and I hope you keep up the good work. Thank you.
For the facilities committee, there was a brief lapse of communication, so I was the only one present, along with Mr. Weaver, Dr. Gruccio, Helen Haley, and Mr. Frangiapatti. We discussed the updated status of Landus. The elevator is due to be delivered hopefully next week. That project should be done before Christmas. We discussed the turf field and the shared services agreement with the CCIA, which is going to save us about eighty to ninety thousand dollars by that shared service agreement. And that can pretty much start tomorrow after we do this bid. And that was the extent of the meeting.
Policy and personnel met today. It was Mrs. Cattispati, Mr. Jennings, and Mr. Sabrana, along with Mr. Frangiapatti, Dr. Rossi, and Dr. Gruccio. And essentially, we spoke about various personnel matters that are, were of issue, and which I am not at liberty to discuss. So, but that was basically it. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Any, there's no items proposed by board members, emergent items, I don't know of any of those. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Anyone? Mr. Ulrich?
Good evening, Tom Ulrich, Dogwood Lane, Violin. I came here tonight, one is, I'm going to be coming with you for the next three years at meetings, but I wanted to say thank you to two members that are departing the board specifically. Damaris Rios, obviously, you know, I served three, I guess, three terms, you know, shortened term, two full terms with her, and, you know, we shared a leadership role at one time. And I can tell you that what a lot of people don't realize is the time and effort that goes into being a board member, and I don't really care what position you take, what you're, what you agree with or disagree with. It's that you care enough to share that opinion with people. And oftentimes, the board is blamed for, I don't know, everything that happens in the city of Violin that isn't right. But what is right is that there are people willing to put their name out there, to voice an opinion, and I found that Damaris was one of those people. So obviously, with that being said, you know, the, the board loses a good board member, and someone else gets a chance, Meg's in the audience, and myself as a, as a returner and Cedric. But I also like to thank Kim, one of my longtime friends, and she got into the, into the fray three years ago and is getting out of the fray now. God bless her. I don't know what I'm thinking, getting back into the fray, but again, the same, you know, sentiments are true. I didn't have a chance to serve with, with Kim, but I know that she cared about the community and that her dedication to the citizens is probably unparalleled, and, and that goes along with, you know, her husband being the chief for many years and serving.
which is going to save us about $80,000 to $90,000 by that shared service agreement. And that can pretty much start tomorrow after we do this bid. And that was the extent of the meeting.
Policy and personnel met today. It was Mrs. Cottis Patti, Mr. Jennings, and Mr. Sabrana, along with Mr. Frangiapanni, Dr. Rossi, and Dr. Gruccio. And essentially, we spoke about various personnel matters that are, were of issue, which I am not at liberty to discuss. So, but that was basically it. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I need, there's no items proposed by board members, emergent items, I don't know of any of those. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Anyone? Mr. Ulrich?
Good evening, Tom Ulrich, Dogwood, Landville. I came here tonight, one is, I'm going to be coming with you for the next three years at meetings. But I wanted to say thank you to two members that are departing the board specifically. Damaris Rios, obviously, you know, I served three, I guess, three terms, you know, shortened term, two full terms with her. And, you know, we shared a leadership role at one time. And I can tell you that what a lot of people don't realize is the time and effort that goes into being a board member. And I don't really care what position you take, what you're, what you agree with or disagree with. It's that you care enough to share that opinion with people. And oftentimes, the board is blamed for, I don't know, everything that happens in the city of Ireland that isn't right. But what is right is that there are people willing to put their name out there, to voice an opinion. And I found that Damaris was one of those people. So obviously, with that being said, you know, the board loses a good board member, and someone else gets a chance, Meg's in the audience and myself as a returner and Cedric. But I also like to thank Kim, one of my longtime friends. And she got into the fray three years ago and is getting out of the fray now. God bless her. I don't know what I'm thinking, getting back into the fray. But again, the same, you know, sentiments are true. I didn't have a chance to serve with Kim, but I know that she cared about the community and that her dedication to the citizens is probably unparalleled. And that goes along with, you know, her husband being the chief for many years and serving public service and, you know, being involved and always supporting the wives group that was out there for police officers and leading that charge and trying to offer support systems and doing things for other people. And it takes a lot of time, a lot of effort. So the board loses two good people, and we have three good people coming on. And we have a lot of work to get done, so I just wanted to say thank you. And to the Camelot program, I know these guys took off. That was just spinning up when I was finishing up with my term on the board. And I can say that, you know, my viewpoints then were that they were making headroom with the board, with these kids. You know, and the most important thing is to see that young man that come up here and speak in front of a crowd, and it's going to be televised. It takes a lot. And it's that type of impact that I, you know, that we need to have as a school district. And good, you know, third-party vendors such as Camelot to come in and, you know, work with the kids, to try to get them on the right track and get them making better decisions. And that's what education is all about. So the band and tests and the sports and all that, kudos, you know, for them and congratulations. So that's about it. You guys have a good holiday, and I'll see everybody on January 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Ulrich.
Thanks.
Good, Ms. Miller?
Vicky Miller, again. I'd like to say something about Mr. Damaris and Kim. Mr. Damaris, I was always proud when you challenged everything, questioned everything. Years ago, that would have never happened. I'm glad to see so many women, Dr. Gruccio in your position, and all you ladies in there, because that wouldn't have happened. I know because I lobbied for women's rights. That's how old I am. I went to Washington. It was the good old boys, but now it's everybody. I'm going to talk about Kim. Kim is special to me. I found a friend. She's dedicated. I know she takes her lunch breaks to go and visit the students. She loves them. She loves being on the board. And I hope that both of you just are taking a little break, and we'll come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Okay, we're gonna... Oh, I'm sorry. You can come to the mic. I'll take the over-under on that one. I got the timer set. Siri, set a timer for five minutes.
Can I get a clarification? This is a double meeting, right? So five times two is 10.
True.
That's where I come from. Before I speak about the ladies this evening, to see the Camelot program progress is something that is dear for me because it was a, one of those leap of faith things we took in the beginning there because, you know, it's filled with negatives, the building, and there were so many positives to bring out. And to see the student tonight speak, see the gentleman speak, it shows that the foundation's there, and now it's really growing. I know Ms. Cottis Patti is pushing for some type of a piece that I would like to see evolved with the trade somehow working there. I think the upcoming board should really investigate that a little bit because we see our partner, C.C. Tech, chose to bail on the trades, which, again, if I could have got on that board, I would have been trying to change that as well. But, you know what, I think it's another place for them to start there, and I hope to see that really happen. One other clarification. Tomorrow night, you're going to be doing the dedication for Dennis Tanner, the Dennis Tanner Building, correct? Just so for anyone that is watching, the start time for that, is that 6 o'clock or 7? 6 o'clock, and that will be here in the auditorium?
I thought it was outside, but I may be...
It's my understanding that it's going to be in the front of the building.
Is it?
I think it's in front of the building.
As I followed all year long, I think that was an outstanding decision by this board, and I commend you guys for that once again. Unlike that gentleman, the class president, who just winged it on his little iPhone there, I can't see like that. So you know how I do it, guys, big letters and a little length behind it. Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Education members. Dr. Gruccio, Mrs. Haley, and Mr. DeSanto. Looking back on my time as a board member, the summer meetings held here at the VHS North Building Auditorium always brings the joy of the holiday season with various outstanding performances by our students from our fabulous Performing Arts Department. It also marks the final meeting of the Vinland Board of Education for the year. But most of all, it brings the end of some members' commitment to serving as a Vinland Board of Education member. That is why I am here this evening. But before I honor and thank these two very special ladies, I would like to congratulate Ms. Spinelli, who's here this evening. I would also like to congratulate Mr. Ulrich, and welcome back to the party. Mr. Holmes, welcome back. You worked hard at it. You earned the votes. Congratulations to you as well. Once again, the lack of funding has put this district behind the eight ball, and I do not envy the tough decisions the new 2018 board and central administration are going to have to make. I only ask that, as always, you keep the best interest of all students and staff members combined with doing what is fair for all taxpayers on the front page when making those tough decisions. Now to our outgoing board members, Mrs. Kim Cottis Patti and Ms. Damaris Rios. It's bittersweet for me to have the honor to stand up here and praise each of you for your service to our city and its students. Mr. Weaver and I have always had some interesting conversations concerning players and pretenders, and I believe these two ladies definitely could be a part of our team for sure. I'm sure you agree, Mr. Weaver. Absolutely. I'll start with Mrs. Cottis Patti. From the time Kim was sworn in, she rolled up her sleeves and got down to business. She was eager to learn and oh so ready to serve. Kim was very soft-spoken early on until she realized both her and I had a lot in common. Most important, we both shared the passion for perfection and continue to believe in all that is good in this district while not having time for the ones who have the hidden agendas that slow the progress down, which unfortunately hurts the students, staff members, and taxpayers in the long run. When it comes to sitting on existing committees, chairing some of those committees, joining an ad hoc committee or two, or maybe three, possibly four when I was around, attending as many events as physically possible, and bailing out me at the time, her president, you are second to none. I thank you for all you have done, all you have tried to do, and your commitment to believing and continuing to push for C.C.T., better known as communication, collaboration, and transparency. You sacrificed many things over the past three years in order to be the best board member you can be. I not only thank you, but your family as well for supporting you all the way and allowing you to commit the countless hours that are needed to help move a school district forward. Thank you, Cottis Patti family. Thank you, Kim. Now to my good friend as well, Mr. Damaris Rios. What else can I say to a woman who has spent nearly a decade of service committed to the city of Vinland and its students? You truly are one in a million. We met the first time in late April of 2010 at our swearing-in reorganization meeting, where you made me feel welcomed from our first hello. I remember being assigned the seat between Ms. Rios and Mr. Finucci and thinking, well, at least they sat me near a pretty young lady. I mean with that to no disrespect to our current mayor, Mr. Anthony Finucci. Being a new board member can be very overwhelming, and I was faced early on with voting on the dreaded first Sedexo contract with barely two weeks under my belt. When the vote took place, I casted the only no vote based on not knowing enough about the contract and not receiving all the answers to my questions before the vote meeting took place. I remember glancing over at Damaris after I made that no vote and seeing her nod her head. I was hoping she was thinking that I was an independent thinker versus a rubber stamper, those same great qualities which she herself has demonstrated over the years that I admire so much. We built a great friendship moving forward based on trust, honesty, and respect for one another. As every friendship goes, it wasn't all roses, as we had some heated discussions as well. But in the end, we always walked away knowing we did what we felt was best. I have always felt that Damaris is wise beyond her years. She is definitely an old soul who has a work ethic like no other. She demonstrates the family values of generations past that are oh so missing in today's society. When it comes to district policies, protocols, and procedures, no board member has the knowledge that she has. Whenever Ms. Rios spoke publicly, everyone listened because they knew she only spoke when a point needed to be made, where the facts were not totally being laid out there correctly. You made me and so many other board members better simply by leading by example, better yet, just being you. I thank you for always being there for me with your words of encouragement, sacrificing countless hours away from your beautiful children, being there for all of our students and everyone in this town. The Vinland Board of Education is losing two outstanding, consistent, and committed members who you honestly do not replace. It is a pleasure for me to call each of you my dear friends for life. Happy holidays to all, and thank you for allowing me the time to speak this evening. Good night.
Thank you, Scott.
No, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak? No, thank you. We're going to go back to the Mr. DeSanto with the solicitor's comments, please.
Thank you.
Number seven.
First of all, I apologize to the board and to Dr. Gruccio. I had notified Dr. Gruccio and Mr. Jennings that I would be late this evening due to a prior commitment. I expected to be here at 6:45. Then I was locked out of the front door. I couldn't get in. And finally, someone helped me to let me know that the back door is open here to the auditorium. In conferring with Mr. Jennings, we agreed that it would be appropriate for me tonight to update the board and the public with respect to a presentation that I made in October regarding the superintendent's contract. At that time, I advised the board of the options available to the board with respect to Dr. Gruccio's contract. Under Title 18A and her contract, she must be notified by December 31st of the board's intention to non-renew her or else her contract is automatically renewed for an additional three years, the same term as her current contract. Mr. Jennings had contacted me regarding what to do on the December agenda, and I had indicated, as I did that night, that only the five non-conflicted board members could vote on renewal, non-renewal, extension, et cetera, and that the law requires a vote of five affirmative votes regardless of the number of board members voting. So with respect to Dr. Gruccio's renewal or non-renewal, five board members out of the five non-conflicted are necessary to carry the vote. So Mr. Jennings sent out an email to the board saying that if any board member wanted to discuss Dr. Gruccio's contract, they should notify him, and it would be placed on the agenda. I can't speak for what's in the mind of board members, but it appeared to me, for whatever that it's worth, is that since a unanimous vote of five board members were needed, there would be a meaningless discussion of her contract if one board member wanted to talk about it. I think that, without putting myself in the minds of board members, I think that the realization was that under no circumstances would there be five out of five that would vote for non-renewal. So consequently, the matter is not on the agenda tonight. Come January 1, by operation of law and her contract, Dr. Gruccio will be renewed for a three-year term.
Thank you, Mr. DeSanto. We waited an hour and 45 minutes for that. Thank you. Okay, let's move on here. Old business, anyone? Anything, any new business? Board members' comments? Eugene, got anything?
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Sabrana?
Thank you to our flag saluters. Congratulations to Mr. McDevitt retiring after a stellar career, doing so much for our kids. Also to Mrs. Comines for the presentation by the choir. It always makes the board meeting in December a little more festive. And I just want to wish everyone a healthy and happy holiday season and a safe and productive New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Sabrana. Mr. Holmes, anything tonight? All right, Mr. Fiocchi?
Not at this time.
Nothing. Mr. Holmes?
Let me see. Congratulations, everyone recognized tonight. Thank you, Mr. McDevitt, for 30-plus years of service. Congratulations to Mr. Ulrich and Ms. Spinelli. Look forward to working with both of you come January. Thank you, Ms. Rios and Ms. Cottis Patti, for all their time, wisdom, and being dedicated to the students of this district. Happy holidays to everyone.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Acosta.
I'd like to wish everyone a very happy holiday. I echo all of the sentiments this evening by my fellow board members as well as the members of the public. I'd like to congratulate all the students for all of the accomplishments that they have had so far this year, and I look forward to seeing further accomplishments the remainder of the year. But a very, very special thanks to Damaris Rios and to Kim Cottis Patti. It has truly, truly been an honor serving with both of you. And I know, as a parent with children, I can't say enough about your dedication. And just from the bottom of my heart, I know how much you all care for the students, and that's really what matters in the long run. I wish you both much luck, success, and I hope to see you very soon. And I have a feeling I will, in some capacity or other, with our school district. I really think that there, once you have, once you're bitten by that service bug, it doesn't go away. So I hope that you continue to feel the sting and that we can count on you for your support and your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Acosta. Ms. Cottis Patti? For the last time?
First, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Ulrich, Ms. Spinelli, and Mr. Cedric on your positions on the board. Good luck next year. I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. I'd like to congratulate Winslow School for their winning float in this year's Christmas parade. Thank you to our Vinland High School students who led us in the flag salute, and Ms. Comines for bringing the choir out this evening. Congratulations to Tess Fisher on her great high school career and winning the state singles tennis championship. Mr. Ashton, Mr. Lundey, thank you for coming this evening and giving your update for Camelot. I've had the opportunity over the past three years to watch this program grow. I'm impressed, as are many, with the job that you're doing with our students. Before I leave office, I'm very happy to see that the program was expanded to include the middle school students. I've had the opportunity to see firsthand the great job that's being done. After discussion with Mr. Frangiapanni, I'm hopeful that a trade will be introduced as part of their curriculum. To the students and to the staff at Camelot, keep up the great work. To the students and to the staff at Camelot, keep up the great work. To our band, the staff, and parents, congratulations on a great season. Mr. McDevitt, congratulations to you, and thank you for all of your hard work and dedication over your several years of service. I'm sure there are a lot of people, especially your students, who are going to miss you. I would like to wish you all the best in your retirement next year. You deserve it. When I ran for the board three years ago, I will admit I had no clue what I was getting myself into. I was told all it was, yes, Mr. Alrich, was two meetings a month, maybe a few functions, and a committee meeting here or there. It turned into so much more than that. There's so much to grasp in those first few months, and I was fortunate my first year to be mentored by a few of the very best. Mr. English, Ms. Rios, Mrs. Morello, Mr. Dewini. That first year, I think I served on one committee, and now my third, I've been preschool liaison for three years. I sit on every committee, two ad hoc committees, and between the regular and ad hoc committee, I chair three of them. I've done my best to attend as many functions in the district as I could. To me, it's the best part of being a board member, having the opportunity to see the accomplishments of all of the students and being able to interact with them. Mr. English, thank you for your kind words. Although you could be very long-winded from time to time, you always had the time for everyone and always had the students in districts' best interest. I believe your insistence of CCT, communications, collaboration, and transparency is fundamental to a great board. You are a great leader and a great role model and a great representative, and yes, a good friend. Ms. Rios, I don't even know where to begin. You are the epitome of what a good board member should be. I am grateful that I had the opportunity to serve with you over the past three years. Your objectivity, brutal honesty, and dedication for the students in this district are things that I don't think can ever be matched by another board member. The district and especially the students are losing a very valuable asset. I wish you and your family the best in whatever the future holds for you, but I have a feeling that the public will be hearing from you in the not-so-distant future. I'd like to wish my husband a very happy birthday, which is tomorrow, and also to him and my family. Thank you for always being there, supporting me, and understanding how important it was for me to be as involved as I could be with this board and the district. There are so many people to thank in the district. Mr. Patel, Chef Mark for all the great meals, to all of our supervisors who come to the meetings, Ms. Godluski, Mr. Mustarel, Mr. Salerno, Mr. Weaver, and Mr. Farinaccio. I'm looking forward to touring our new school and the administration building. To our administrators, teachers, and support staff, thank you so much for embracing me and including me in your events and functions, and for all you do for our students. Dr. Gruccio and central administration, thank you for your open-door policy and for all the hard work both you and your staff do day in and day out. Mr. DeSanto, I've had the pleasure of sitting next to you for my entire three years. Thank you for keeping me in check, and I'm hoping to see you sitting here for years to come. Thank you, Mr. Bark, Mrs. Miller, and to those who attended the board meetings on a regular basis, sometimes you are the only one here, so thank you for taking that time. I would encourage the public, especially those with children in the district, to come out to the board meetings or watch it live, just to see what's going on in the district. To my fellow board members and incoming board members, I'm wishing you all the best for the 2018 year. There will be many combined, there will be many combined years of knowledge sitting on the incoming board with Mr. Medio, Mr. Alrich, Mr. Sabrina, to name a few. Don't be afraid to take advantage of that and use that knowledge. Be true to yourself and your beliefs, and don't be afraid to voice your opinions. Be an independent thinker. Remember what is important and who put you there. You are the taxpayers, the districts, and most of all, the voice for students, all of our students. Finally, I'd like to say what an honor and privilege it has been over the past three years to serve this district, the taxpayers, and especially our students. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Cottisbody. Mrs. Rios?
If you don't mind, I'm gonna go down to the podium to speak, and I would like for my family to join me.
Hi.
Future politician. Congratulations, first of all, to all the award recipients tonight. Good job to the coaches, educators, and students. Tom, you will be replacing me, so I have no worries whatsoever. But thank you for your kind words. Vicki, thank you for your kind words. Scott, thank you for your kind words and for your friendship. Congratulations to the newly-elected board members and the re-elected board members, because Cedric came back. Kim, thank you for the wonderful words, and all the members of the board, thank you for the wonderful words. It was a pleasure working with you. I wrote a brief speech here, and the reason I came down here was just so we have to remember where we came from. That's why I'm down here, and also because I wanted my family to join me on my very last day. So good evening to all. I must begin by saying that it has been an honor and a pleasure to serve on this board. It is not a thankless job, as many have said. It is an honor to be able to volunteer and help the children of this community through this capacity. I have always based my opinion and decisions on what I thought was best for the children of this district. I want to congratulate our staff because they are very hardworking and they serve our community very well. While on this board, I gained a lot of knowledge and experience that I currently am using as we speak. I remember when I was twenty-nine years old when elected, and I had no children at the time. Now I'm thirty-nine years old, feel old, and I'm engaged to the father of my two handsome boys, Archangel, whom is seven years of age, and Zarachio, who's six months. They say it takes a village to raise a family. Well, my village consists of my mother, Ms. Maribel Rodriguez, my brother and his wife, Alexander and Maria Mercado, and finally, my fiance, Mario Cruz, and Mr. Irzary as well. Thank you, all of you. I could not have gotten this far without their ongoing support. My reason for not pursuing another term is based on the fact that Archangel's in second grade, and he now needs my utmost devotion and guidance in his education. Zarachio is very, very needy and needs a lot of attention. They do have two different personalities. I do want to thank publicly, I do want to thank publicly Archangel for allowing me to sacrifice time from him and home in order to provide volunteer service to our community. I love you, Archangel, and I love you, Zarachio. This is my Zarachio.
Hi.
To all the past and current staff, administrators, and board members, it has been a pleasure working with you for the betterment of our district. You work very hard, and I have always appreciated your hard work. To all the voters and great friends that I have gained over the years and whom have supported me, I thank you for your support. I hope I represented all of you well. To the students, I wish you nothing but the best. Take advantage of the educational opportunities that are being offered to you. Ask many questions. Speak up, and remember that one voice can make all the difference. Always be honest, be courteous, and respectful, but most of all, value yourself and love yourself. In closing, thank you for this wonderful opportunity, and happy holidays to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rios. Ken, Ms. Rios, can you hang out down there? Kim, can we come down there for a minute? On behalf of the district, we would like to present you with a few items. Your plaque with your name on it, board member. A certificate of appreciation on a plaque, which is very special. Haven't gotten one of them yet. And your picture. Board photo. Mr. Boardley? Comments?
First, I want to start out by saying we have tremendous things going on in this district. It's not just sports, although they're doing very well. We have academics that are through the roof, that can compete with any private school in South Jersey. Having attended the Academic Bowl recently, I think I got three questions out of all of them correct, and I was super proud. Those kids are remarkable in what they know, what they study, and how they study, and it's a testament to the teachers in our district that put that knowledge into their heads. So I want to thank Dr. Gruccio for leading the path, all the supervisors that give the teachers the support to be able to teach our children to succeed the way that they are. Our sports serve as a purpose for children like myself, who are not necessarily academic-savvy, I guess is a good word. They were an outlet to drive me to come to school. They were a goal. I had to succeed in school in order to participate in sporting events. So kudos to all of our coaches, who continuously not only coach the sports, but also enforce our academic standards. As you heard, the tennis team has outstanding academics, and they're still champions. So it can be done. Mr. Matos is not here. He does a fantastic job keeping the kids, the seniors in this district, very motivated and positive. There's been a big turnaround in the high schools as far as morale goes when it comes to the dress code and different spirit-related things. So kudos to all of our district staff, from central administration down to our teachers, for doing a fantastic job. Tonight, we'll also be saying goodbye for now to Ms. Rios and Ms. Cottisbody, and I wanted to take the time to thank both of you for helping me progress as a board member. Mrs. Cottisbody has guided me through my first year all the way up until the second year and providing me with invaluable knowledge. Ms. Rios has always given valid points that encourage conversation and thought. She has also helped me see some things differently and helped the public stay informed, helping explain things in a more detailed fashion. Both of you tremendously helped this district, and the success we see daily in academics is the proof. So thank you for your service on our board, and I pray that your next endeavors provide you with fulfillment and success. So finally, I just want to say thank you, everyone. 2017 has not been such a great year for me personally. However, being on this board has helped me keep a positive outlook and given me a purpose to continue to get up every day and fight through my struggles. It's been a blessing. I thank everyone, from our students all the way up to the top, especially our board members, for helping me fight through all that. And 2018's gotta get better. So I'm looking forward to more success in this district and a healthier future for myself. So Merry Christmas, and everyone have a happy holiday and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boardley. I'm going to go ahead and say a few things, Mary, and then you can finish this up, okay? Yeah, Kim and Damaris, your contributions to this board will be missed. You guys have each taught us all valuable lessons and different aspects of, given us different views of different things and ideas, and you are truly going to be missed on this board. And, you know, through my time here, I have one more year, I remember I pulled something from each and every one of you, and I gladly accepted that. Scott, Tom, all of you, over the years, it's been a pleasure. I'm gonna miss you two guys. You know, the whole face of our board is gonna change. I know, even if it's one person, it still changes. And I'd like to thank Dr. Gruccio for producing the plaques and the photos for you guys and to have thought enough to put that all together for you guys and bring it here tonight. And saying that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Gruccio.
Thank you. I think tonight was another fine example of how proud we can be of our district and what wonderful students and teachers we have out there, and they just make us proud in so many different realms, as Mr. Boardley said. I have sat up here now for six years, and I've worked with a lot of different people on the Board of Ed, and I have to say that no matter what you run for, when you put yourself out there to run for any election, it's not an easy thing to do. And I give everybody on this board and the prior boards that I worked with a lot of credit for putting themselves out there and for caring enough to get involved. The people that are sitting on this board aren't here for money, because they don't make any money being a board member. They come here because they care and they want to make a difference for our children, and that's really what all of this is about. As long as we sit up here and work together, we don't have to always agree, but if our decisions come from our heart and we base them on what's right for kids, none of us can go wrong. And it has truly been an honor and a pleasure for me to work with Damaris for so many years and with Kim. I thank both of you for the time that you've given, and I want to thank your families because I know it takes time from you as well. And I want to thank you for sharing them with us, and thank you for the time that you've given to help make this a better district. I wish you nothing but the very best. It's been my honor to work with both of you. I wish everyone a very blessed and happy Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy whatever. I just hope you enjoy the holidays, stay safe, and be well. And please remember that even when we think things are tough and we have some things up here that we worry about or get upset about, there are many people out there that are going through a lot worse right now and who have real heartaches and a lot that they have to deal with, right in our own school family. So please keep them in mind, and remember that there's always somebody worse off. So let's enjoy our holidays, be grateful for what we have, and for one another, and again, God bless you all, and thank you for being a part of my life.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. Jeff, you have something else?
Yes, before we end, Chief, just want to say a happy early birthday to you. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you.